On Thursday, October twenty third, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Call the committee to order. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we want to welcome a new cab member from Linfield, Charles Ragusa. So just introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, I go by Charlie Ragusa unless I'm signing something. Well, Linfield makes a difference. I've been in Linfield for thirty years.
So you have the commissioner decide the cab members on this.
Okay.
And what inspired you to take this role?
Well, I've been involved with different things in Linfield with the town. And they first came to me and asked if I wanted to be on the the board for building development, which the town was filled. I said, we have a perfect spot for you. And I said, I don't know anything about it. Um, I don't think of it. This will give Paul a little bit of information. But Paul, I think he might have been out of the office and I ended up speaking to Erica. Uh, and she sent me some information and the people from Linfield asked if I'll do it. I said, I'll do anything you want me to do. And that's why I'm here. I know nothing about electricity other than paying my bill. Uh, to save that few dollars in the beginning. Uh, and I'll do anything that needs to be done. Thanks. I am. I don't know if anyone, I used to, I'm retired. And I was the president of Mutual Fund and Financial Services Organization. And I was a member of many boards with that because our company helped create different organizations. And I was board member of each of those as well.
I'm very happy to have you. Thanks for joining. Thanks for bringing your expertise to the board. And I think you'll find we're a very collaborative bunch and we absolutely welcome your feedback.
Excellent.
Great. Okay, so we're going to do a few committee updates. I'll go with Ray first.
So I'm involved in several things in the town of Reading. One of the ones is Recal, which is the senior center, new building for the senior center. And they've been trying to, they're going to begin all electric building. And the question is, can they afford solar panels to go on top of it? And the question was, what would be the rebate? And I think the, the person who is doing the renewable energy portion of that for the architect, um, it while he had touched base with Megan early on in the process, made an assumption about what the compensation might be. And so I got in touch through Pam and through Karen, Eric, and a number of people that I should meet up, meet up with, um, the, the group there and kind of close the loop. And so I talked with Megan and encouraged the two to get together. But essentially what the understanding or misunderstanding is, is what is the compensation? And I think the strict answer is, well, I don't know what your compensation is because we don't figure compensation until you apply. You're not going to apply for several years, so rules could change, so I don't know. And that I don't know turned into zero. And there will be compensation, even if we don't quite know the answer. And the correct answer, I think, is assume that you would get what you're getting. We are offering now. That should be the right answer. And because we're not offering those, no compensation, there'll be compensation. There's value all the way around to do this. Um, if the town of Reading puts an electric building and doesn't put on solar, then they're paying the, the electric rate. Um, and then RMLD is then on the hook for providing more power because they're leaded by that from the grid. And that'll lead to our increase in demand, which will lead to more charges. If you put solar panels on, then that reduces the town's bill, uh, reduces the exposure that RMLD has in terms of providing power. And it is a benefit back to the community because they're, they're offsetting substantially their, their power and is, is a greener building. So the right answer is to put solar panels on the building and whatever compensation is needed to get past breakeven. Um, that should be where we're targeting our, our mitigation, whatever that might be at the time. So hopefully that, that loop's getting closed and that will be, um, the decision that the, the planning board makes. Um, I haven't talked with Megan again as to whether she's closed the loop, but I think that's the direction it's heading. Um, any questions about that or? No? Okay, good. Um, I'm also on the charter review, Reading's Town Charter Review Committee. Um, and we've presented the changes to the town charter to the select board. The select board had some suggestions. We followed up with those. And we are now preparing for the presentation of the changes to the town charter to the town meeting. Uh, and so we've all been assigned sections to present and I'll be presenting some of the sections, uh, changes to the town charter. Um, no real change, no, none of the edits that were made affected the definition of, um, Reading Light Board Member or Commissioner and the responsibilities. Um, there were other sections that had some comments, so none of that changed. But that will, that's moving forward and town meeting is the next stop.
Thank you. Okay.
Great.
Um, any other, I know for, from a selection committee standpoint, we're, we're here at the next step, so we can hold on that. The, uh, the subcommittee for the candidate screening has completed their work and made their recommendations. So, um, thank you to the subcommittee members for all of your time and effort and to the RMLD team who participated in that process. I know there was a ton of work that went into it. We had a lot of feedback from, um, RMLD employees, from a lot of time commitment from folks, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and I want to thank the RMLD employees for giving us feedback. We had Patty, uh, as a part of our, um, review committee, gave a lot of great feedback. And, um, so, so yeah, I do want to thank the RMLD team and staff for, for their feedback. It was very helpful.
Thank you. Um, okay, any other committee updates? Do anything on the contract?
Uh, I mean, if we, yeah, if you want a quick update on the contract committee. Um, so we shared a, uh, contract proposal that we voted on last night, uh, yeah, last night, um, to recommend to the board. Um, they will be able to discuss it later on in executive session. Um, just a reminder that the contract committee is me, uh, as the chair and then Dave and Vivek. And so, uh, you know, a deep thank you to the committee who, uh, put in a long, a lot of long hours. I know Vivek was also on the, um, candidate committee and so he was doing double duty, so, uh, really appreciate it.
Thank you to that group as well for all of your time and effort on that stuff.
Is this contract to the line crews or what, what contract are we?
Uh, sorry, for the, uh, for the general manager. For the general manager.
Good clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody may know that, so thank you for that.
This is for the selection.
I, I, I know that couple of contracts, right?
No.
Landscaping contract.
Very good clarification. Thank you.
We're going to cut the February twice a month.
Well, I mean, it is fall.
Okay, excellent. So we have about twenty minutes until we're going to start, um, our interview process. But, um, we're going to use that time to talk through the process for how this evening is going to go as well as, uh, the plan for tomorrow. And then, um, we will have, uh, two candidates, uh, who are here in person who will be, um, interviewed. So, um, I will start just by saying, um, in general, the, the board of commissioners is not going to take public comments at this meeting. Um, if you are listening in and you would like to provide feedback or comments relative to the finalists, um, after their interviews, um, you absolutely can do so via email. Um, you can send that correspondence, correspondence to rmldboc@rmld.com. Um, and if you submit that before eleven AM tomorrow, um, then, uh, we will be able to receive that and include that before we have our kind of planned final deliberations on, uh, the selected candidate. Um, but in terms of folks who are in the room on the board of commissioners and, um, on the, um, cab, our, um, oh, wait a second. We skipped a couple of things that we have to do before that. Sorry about that, guys. Um, okay.
Your request?
Uh, yeah, so first approval of meeting minutes. Um, so we have a couple.
Yeah, so when we get a motion? Sorry, can just read the motion?
Yes, uh, move the, the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approve the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board, and the board secretary, August twenty second.
I say, I, I second it. Uh, then any discussion? Okay, so that, all right, so I think we can, but, but it's joint, right, with you guys, so that was joint, yeah. Yeah, I'll wait to see if there's any discussion from you.
Before you vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, does anybody want to read the?
I can read it. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board secretary, August twenty-two and August twenty-seventh. Second.
Any discussion about the meeting minutes? Okay. Um, so.
Just one small correction which was pointed out to Erica and I think, yeah.
And those are included in the ones that you guys have. Um, do you want me to read it for that?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Um.
So, uh, so we can vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vivek's only aye. You can abstain if you want, but, but.
I read it, but I didn't know what I was. No, it was correct.
Okay.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm here. Um, GM search committee has some notes to.
So those are actually at the table for the next meeting.
Oh, they're tables. Okay, all right. Okay, uh, we have a procurement request to do, um, this is IB twenty twenty-five twenty-two, a steam boiler replacement. Who is going to be speaking from RMLD on this request?
I am, Pam.
Okay. Hi, Paul.
Hi, how are you? How is everybody?
Oh, really hard to hear you. Hang on, let's, we'll try to work on the audio for a second.
Right, yes, Paul?
I have it turned up all the way on.
What about an apple?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We, we can. It's a little difficult, um, but, uh, what, if you can just speak up as loud as possible.
Sure, absolutely.
On that would be great.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to report on an invitation for a bid to, uh, replace a steam boiler. The project overview, we're replacing an existing steam boiler at Station One due to a cracked section in the boiler. It is irreparable. The scope of the project involves removing the current unit and installing a new boiler system. There is a deadline associated with this and that would be prior to winter bad weather to ensure operational heating inside the building. The importance of this project is to, is the basement houses a continuously operating sump pump. If the boiler wasn't working properly, things could freeze, causing the pump and a discharge pipe failure, which would risk the basement to get flooded. Building also functions as a paper storage facility for RMLD, which requires stable humidity levels maintained by the seating system to prevent moisture damage. The procurement details are bid was issued to fifteen companies, one five, six responded. Contract was awarded to Ambient Temperature Corporation, also known as ATCO, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. The estimated costs, cost is forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Atco's bid came in at forty-three nine or fifty-seven hundred dollars under budget. That's all I have to report.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions or discussion?
I'm just curious what the fuel source is.
Gas, wood?
Gas boiler? If you mean, like, convert to electricity at RMLD, right? Just ask.
I, David, the notes that I have, uh, don't talk about that.
Okay. All right. Electrification.
Thanks. Any other discussion?
I had the same question, but. I guess that's been looked at.
Is Patty Leo in the room? Is Patty there?
Say that again?
I say, is Patty there that works with Chris Danaboni, no?
No.
No, she might, no. Okay, sorry.
It's fueled by gas.
It's, yeah. I was gonna say, it's a boil, it's a boiler. It's either oil fired or gas fired boiler. It's not an electric fired boiler at that scale. It's not economical, so. Uh, I was assuming it was one or the other.
Sure. Just thought he was confirming, you know, why wouldn't it be heat pumps, but, all right, never mind.
If you're moving water as the heating agent, that's probably why it's not heat pumps.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Ready for the vote? Oh, sorry, we didn't, somebody read the motion?
Thank you.
No one read it. No one read it. Okay, who read the motion?
I'll do it.
One, three.
Move that bid twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four for the RMLD steam boiler replacement be awarded to ATCO Inc. for forty-three thousand nine hundred pursuant to Master of No Laws, Chapter Thirty, Section Thirty-five M. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second.
I'll just modify that that bid twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. It's correct. It's the twenty-four, so I'm just.
I said twenty-four, sorry.
It's fine.
One of those twenties.
Um, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries, five, zero.
May I make a quick comment? There is an Eastern Gateway Meeting coming up, um, and I did not know if anybody from RMLD is attending. I am planning to attend.
Planning to attend.
Okay, but you're not planning to attend as RMLD. You're board members, but you're in there as citizens and as there as a registered citizen. I didn't know if anybody from RMLD, Emma, I could say that, RMLD directly is going to be attending.
Not that I'd leave it now.
Okay.
And then if three of you do want to attend, we will have to probably post it as a meeting just to be safe.
Post it as a meeting just to be safe, please. Thank you. When is it? Twenty-seventh? Yeah. Yeah, the week of Thanksgiving, Halloween, that Monday. I just, just want to caution anybody that, you know, we don't speak for RMLD. Yeah, where they're, we can make comments of what we want to do.
You just have to say, um, I am, you could say you're on the board, you're speaking as a citizen, not as a.
Yeah, correct.
Not representing the board.
Correct. Um, and that gateway project does not include the RMLD property. It's everything on the other side of the tracks, so.
Wouldn't affect this site.
Uh, next agenda item is ENE information request, update Vivek.
Yeah, okay, no, so thank you. Uh, I know Vince on the line, right? So hi, Vince. Uh, we, at the last meeting, we discussed, uh, some work that RMLD has been doing with, um, ENE and some of us felt we needed to get some more detail. And the action was for Dave and me to put some information together, put together information request. We did that. We shared that with Paul. And that information request has been sent to ENE. ENE has acknowledged it. And they're planning to have a meeting with us on November seventh at RMLD. I, I think that's been, it's being set up or it's been set up. And David, you're welcome to join us at the meeting. So it's going to be Pam.
Pretty, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's going to be a meeting where I, I think, W-Win, do you want to add any comments here?
He's, it looks like he's muted.
I think the intent was it was not supposed, not going to be a full cab BOC meeting. It's, uh, um, for the chairs.
Yeah, he, he reached out to the chairs and I said, I wanted to make sure Dave was on the meeting, so.
Couple of quick thoughts on it. Why wouldn't we just have this be at a, at one of our meetings in the next month or two? Why, why would it be a private meeting with two board members?
This is, the, the idea is that there may be information that's not public information.
So then it could be executive session?
It, it can be an executive session, yes. Uh, so.
I mean, any, any, to the extent it's, 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 it's involves competitively sensitive under the definitions, then you'd move to executive, right? So that's how you do things as a public board. You either do an open session or you do a regular session.
Yeah, no, no, and, and so the idea was that we, we, we can do it that way. So the question is, Pam, how would you, from your point of view?
I, I think if, if the request is that the full board is interested in the topic, then we can have an executive session. Um, it would be a combined cab and EOC executive session.
Finally, I think, uh, the, the, what, what my request was to have this information available to us before we have the budget discussion, okay? Because I said we, we need to have this information before we, we, we discuss it as a budget item.
So I think that means we'd have to change the date. RMLD is Fridays, technically not. I mean, would we be able to do a meeting on Friday here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um.
So we'll have to poll for availability from the rest of the board in the cab. So we'll, we'll get back to everybody with a poll on the schedule.
So, you know, you do not want to keep the November seventh one PM meeting anymore. You would rather change that to either be an executive on that day or an additional separate executive another day.
I don't think we need to do two meetings, so it would either be canceled and an executive would be scheduled for a different date or we use that date and time for an executive.
Can everyone here, do they know if they can do that?
Could we do a quick poll to see who could make it zoom executive?
Scheduling zoom sign, but yeah.
That we could possibly keep the same time, just expand it to be zooming.
November seventh.
November seventh at one PM.
Yeah.
Just, uh, I'm, I won't be there personally, but I didn't know if anybody would come on.
Zoom is an option.
I, I would prefer not to.
Okay, sounds like no then.
No, on what?
On the.
Being available on one o'clock on the seven schedule.
So we will need to look for a date and time that works for as many as possible prior to the thirteenth. What's our, what's our budget meeting?
It's the twelfth, so we did a poll for the tenth because you rather preserve that for your contract negotiations. It looks like mostly you could do the tenth, which is Monday. I do not know if Ben can do the tenth. Ben, I know you're on the call. If you're comfortable answering, if not, we can circle that.
Because that is also the day before Veterans Day. Anybody's coming on the town staff.
I can do it.
I'd prefer, I, I have a conflict that night.
Optional, it's just a suggestion, you have the meeting on the seventh at one with just whoever can attend. Um, if it's not a board meeting, it's not a board meeting. And then if you want to do an additional, then you can do that. But, um, if you want it before the budget, I think that might be the only date that works. Based on the polls we already have.
Yeah, it works. Um, so first of all, I, I do think it should be a meeting. Um, we talked about it, a public meeting, it should be, it should be a board meeting. If it's, if it's appropriate under executive, then we move to executives. But that, this is information that the board, I, I just think we should do meetings as a proper board, not a couple of members.
Just, just to counter, I think, let's kick it off with Vivek. Maybe he'll even help develop a framework of what are the questions you can ask and then Finn can.
Yeah, no, the, the questions have been asked. I mean, we've asked the questions.
Okay.
And so the, the, I think they, we've compiled a list of information that we wanted because what in the past, we were given information about various programs. What we wanted was everything buttoned up and presented in a certain way. Okay, so that request has been made of ENE. And I'm okay, um, I, I have a conflict on the ten. I mean, I, I've tried to be very flexible on this. I, I, I had a lot of flexibility going into this. They suggested four, five, six, seven. I said yes. Then I'm saying no, okay? So I, I'd like to find another one.
Other fourth, fifth, sixth option, options, any of those days?
I, I'm out that whole week.
Okay.
So. So, I mean, I'll, I'll make myself available, you know?
Um.
You know, if we can, if there's a zoo, if, you know, I'll, I'll look and see if I can join you.
This is good. Fifth has, you know, only limited conflicts. I could probably make a, a range of options there. Uh, fourth is the election day.
What about the sixth?
I could do the sixth.
Are we talking evening or?
Yeah, sixth, yeah.
Either, either come in with me.
Yeah, let's do the sixth. Let's check with.
Ben, could you do the sixth?
Works for me.
Okay.
Thank you, Vince.
Okay, so, thank you so much. Okay. All right, so we're going to move into the general manager interview portion of the evening. Um, so we have, uh, again, big thanks to everybody who was part of this process, um, to get us up to this point. Uh, we have two candidates this evening. Um, we, we did have a third candidate, um, who decided to remove themselves from the process due to personal reasons, so we totally respect that and appreciate their participation and certainly wish them the best of luck. Um, very excited about these two candidates. Um, I think we have two highly qualified, um, and fantastic options. So I'm really excited and I hope the rest of the board is really excited about, um, talking to each of them this evening. Um, so we have a couple of packets, uh, or packet in front of everybody with interview, um, questions and, uh, notes sections. Um, so we'll go through the questions or the topics in a moment. Um, what we're going to do is, um, give everybody the space to take notes on each of the questions that are asked um, and provide a score between one and four, no halves, um, for each of the questions. That will be a guide for us as we go into deliberation around, you know, strengths and opportunities for each of the candidates. Um, we will ask for that input from both the cab and the board of commissioners. Um, once we have an opportunity to talk through all of that feedback, um, I will then, uh, ask the board members, um, to, um, give their first choice vote. Um, the cab, we will take their feedback, but we will not ask the cab for a vote. Um, any questions on the process in terms of capturing feedback or taking scoring or how we will vote? By the way, tomorrow.
But, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, most likely, yeah. We're, we're going to be doing two, two hours worth of interviews. Um, then we will need to move into an executive session for, um, discussions on the contract that we would like to offer to, um, the eventually selected candidate. And doing that plus then deliberation around the candidate themselves is probably too much for one evening. Um, so we're going to also then, that also gives us an opportunity to ask the public or anybody else, you know, anybody who has a say that they can send an email, um, and we can look at it, um, before we deliberate tomorrow at noon.
So, uh, so I just want my cab colleagues to be clear. There'll be a question that Tim will ask on behalf of the cab, okay? And then you guys will score the information and you'll share with me. And then I will collect that information and I'll socialize with Pam.
Yes, you can, you will represent that with the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
Are we scoring in this book?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Or whichever way you want to do it.
The scores by different people or?
Yeah.
Yes, so there are two sections. Um, the first section, it's alphabetically, is, uh, for Mr. Small. Um, so any of the notes around, you'll see this kind of gray section divider here with Small on the front. That's, that'll be like the start of that section. And then there is also a gray divider, um, with Yusevich on the front. That'll be, um, Ms. Yusevich's section. Um, so the way we're going to go through this is I'll do some opening remarks. That'll take three minutes. Um, the, then I will talk about, um, a particular question category. We'll have each of the board members will have a category. So, um, I will talk about, I will ask questions regarding leadership, decision-making and crisis management for ten minutes. Um, strategic vision and long-term planning, Mr. Talbot will ask questions about that for eight minutes. Um, execution. Um, execution, resilience and results. Mr. Swanson will ask questions about that for eight minutes. Labor relations and organizational culture. Mr. Coulter will ask questions about that for nine minutes. Um, stakeholder engagement and communication. Mr. Woods from the cab will ask questions about that. Um, motivation and fit. Um. Is Mr. Porter and me giving four minutes for that. I didn't, didn't realize it could be less than that, but, um, we can certainly give you extra time if we have time for, um, at the end. Um, so you'll see on this, that, that's the first section. I mean, you don't have to take notes there. Notes can, um, go on the major pages. You'll see the next page has the score, one through four for each of the sections. So please feel free to fill that out there. Um, and the score guide, you can see there on the pages, but each score will get one through four. One is does not meet expectations. Two would be partially meets expectations. Three is meets and four is exceeds expectations. So please select one of. Thanks. One of the, uh, four, for each of the question sections. Um, I know that this has been sent out to, um, the board to review in advance. So before we jump in, I just wanna ask if there are any questions about the questions, any modifications to the questions? Um, we do wanna try to, uh, maintain consistency in questions between the two candidates. So if anybody has any.
Now.
Yeah, now.
Only, the only one would be to get into a little bit about what the customer engagement strategy would be as that grows increasingly important. My segue into that in, in a couple of these.
So, I agree, it's very important. Um, we, we do have a stakeholder engagement and communication section that Mr. Wood is still planning to cover. Can you ensure that you include a specific question about? Um. Rate payer.
Yeah.
Communication.
Okay.
Be great. Is that?
That, that says, I mean, the question is who are the most critical stakeholders? But it doesn't really ask how are we gonna at scale kinda engage more robustly with all of our rate, uh, sorry, our people who are.
Can you maybe just, um, what would, what would you like to say?
I guess it's.
Say, then we just make sure.
Sure, I guess it's just like, you know, with our thirty odd thousand customers, we're gonna need to be more involved in interacting with them, understanding how to shape load and with the, the smart meters and everything, how, how will they implement and, and execute on that? How will, uh, what do they see doing in this whole area of, of increasing customer interactions and customer engagement? That makes sense? Bob's grimace.
I, I think it's, whatever you free form on, on the question.
Sure.
Just free form on the question again.
Yeah.
To the next candidate. I don't think we need to change the question, but I just think we just need to repeat it to both candidates. I, I'm, I'm no, no objection to it, cause I think that's part of the.
Yeah, yeah, just be flexible in the dialogue. Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, no, I.
Once we're in the conversation, it could.
Sure, anything.
I agree.
Yeah. That enough, Tim, to go on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other feedback on the questions or changes? Okay. Great. Are there any questions on the process? Note, scoring, expectations?
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I've got four minutes and I've got more questions to ask than any other section.
Um. Why we do four minutes in the last?
Yeah, um.
I think we, uh, we didn't change the time and last minute added something to yours, right? So that might have been.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we do this? Leave, leave, let's eight minutes for my section. I don't, I don't know why I got ten. Um, eight minutes for Bob's section and eight minutes for your section, right?
Right.
Okay, then everybody's even.
Yeah, I'm just.
And I'll be super close, short with my opening remarks.
Cause I'm looking at the questions and some are quite similar, so I didn't know if, if paraphrasing them to get to the point is, uh.
In your section, you mean?
Section, it's whether it really needs to be six distinct questions. Um, but we'll work through it and try to keep it consistent between the candidates.
Sure. Okay.
And some, some questions like a yes, no answer, right, yeah?
Well, the, the first two can be combined. It's, it's asked together for a single response. Um. And the, the, the last one is availability. That's pretty direct.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then the last one is a follow-up question. So I kinda see it's really more three questions with a confirmation and. So I, we, to, I'm just saying, I'm just saying this, I might not ask each question individually. One, sure. One, uh, one possible add. The first portion of your job, why do you want this job, right? That's probably the, either it should be the summary, it should be intro or it should be the conclusion, maybe take down, back to Pam. Um, but that's always a, um, that's the, why do you think you're the right fit for this job? That's a great, you know.
Well, I, I don't have the problem with the question, but then the next one is kind of the same thing, except some added words.
I think, but, so, so I would combine the two. Take that out of your, out of your question and either give it to Pam as a, as an ending or you.
Well, I am the ending. I mean, I can just make it the last one I ask.
Make that the last one you ask, right? Why do you want the job? Tell me why you're the best fit to have this job. And then maybe move that down and then that's somewhat of an un, untimed. You get a couple of minutes to ramble. We go with respect to time, with the respect to time, you know, we wanted to win. But I think ten minutes in the beginning, I think you'll be done until ten minutes.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we will, um, we'll do our best to move through it quickly. Any other questions or comments? Uh, I think we can go ahead and bring in the first candidate. I don't think, I don't think so. I think we can let him go, both of them go.
Our candidates are gonna be told it's not a decision tonight, right?
Um, yes, that's a great point. I will tell them that.
Yeah. Just so they're, they're not anxious for a phone call.
Yeah.
They get sent home. Beat it.
Yeah.
I was gonna do brass horn section, but. Tap away. When do you keep it timed?
Pam has the.
Oh, you have the time.
Stopwatch on the.
On, on your iPad.
Oh, okay. What happens when it, um, goes off? Is it making a loud noise or is it just?
I just stopwatch, I didn't do a timer. Do you want me to do a timer?
Uh, no, that's fine. I'll just do a stopwatch. You both keep an eye on it, maybe. I lapse in my duties of monitoring the time, please. It's making. Welcome.
Love you.
Thanks for joining us. Um, so welcome. Thanks for your interest in this, um, role. Uh, before we jump into specific questions, um, I just wanna make you aware of kind of the process and the timing of how this is gonna go. Um, so we'll have about fifty minutes, um, for questions. We'll go through each of the board members as well as one cab member. We'll have a particular topic area. We'll probably spend about eight minutes for each of those topics, multiple questions within the same topic. Kinda rotate there. Um, and our, uh, it's most likely that we will not have a decision in terms of the candidate to nominate tonight. The plan is that we will, um, meet again as the boards tomorrow, um, at noon and have that conversation. Okay, so, um, you don't have to stick around for hours. Um, any questions before we jump in?
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much for being here again. Um, so we wanted to start for, um, to, by asking you to just tell us a little bit about yourself. Um, maybe for about two minutes or so, um, about your background, what you know about our type of business, um, and your public or private power utility experience at a high level.
Well, first, thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I've been in the electric utility industry for just over twenty-four years. I have a bachelor's of science and a master's of science in electrical engineering, uh, both of them and also with a concentration in, in, um, power. Um, I started off my career at National Grid as an operations engineer, where I did a little bit of everything. Uh, new customer services, uh, system improvement jobs, switching, tagging, cable testing. Uh, just kind of did everything on the distribution side. Um, I did that for six or seven years. And opportunity came up and I moved over to the project management side of the house where I was a distribution line project manager. Uh, so any project that was over a million dollars in the capital spend, got a project manager. Um, I'd worked on that for about six years. During that timeframe, um, there was a substation group and a transmission line group that did project management as well. And they had a, a process that they called it a playbook of how they manage projects. And the business decided to try to, um, update that, include distribution line into that process. So I was, I spent two years on a special assignment, um, with five other people going around reviewing that process, making changes to it, incorporating distribution line side to it. Then creating all the training and the procedures. Um, and then we implemented it into the business. Um, I was left, I did that. And when that was done, they had combined project management where anybody could manage any of the types of projects. So at that point, I was managing transmission line projects, substation projects, uh, distribution projects. I was given at the time the Greater Boston Study, which is the second largest group of projects in the National Grid. It was over, so I think it started off at about five hundred million. It got whittled down to about two hundred fifty million. Um, but I did that for a couple of years and then an opportunity came up at the town of Danvers in the electric division, where I could move over and go back to getting my engineering roots. I had recently at that time completed my master's degree in engineering and I kinda got that bug again and, and, uh, went over to Danvers to be a system engineer where I, where we did a little bit of everything, all the stuff that I did when I was an operations engineer. But we also did substation, um, projects, uh, maintenance, all that stuff. So I've been there for eleven years. And for the last four years, I was able to, I got promoted to the engineering operations manager, where I oversee a group of approximately thirty people, um, between, uh, engineering, uh, line operations and technical services metering. It's kind of like.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, so we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna ask a few questions around kind of leadership and decision-making, crisis management. Um, so if you can start by just describing a little bit of your leadership and management style and specifically, how do you handle disagreements with your, your team or make difficult decisions?
Okay, uh, my management communication style is, uh, open and transparent. I'm very direct with my communications. Um, and that's how I communicate with people as far as like conflicts and between team members or other. Um, I, I actually think that the best thing that, like, I is I encourage some conflict as long as it's professional. Um, I think that's some, the best way to get to a, a good solution for a problem. People are gonna have different opinions of how to do things and I think that fosters, um, a good possible solution. So I try to encourage that in my team when we talk about topics or, um, designs or how we're gonna handle a situation. Um, one example was, we had some newer engineers starting, um, and, uh, it was suggested by one of my engineers that we create kind of a, a, a set of switching language, the common set of terms and, and how we write switching orders. And at first I was kind of a little bit against it because my belief was, I, I didn't wanna hand somebody something where they're just copying when they're writing switch. And I want the person to understand what they're doing. It's very important when you move a load around or isolate something for crews to work on. So I was a little hesitant at that, but we kind of continued that discussion. And after a while, I said, um, we came to a, a compromise where we, we limited it to phrases and specific terms, specific piece of equipment or, um, or how you do a certain thing, make sure that we do it all the time, but it wasn't necessarily you could use to go right in order. Um, and that helped out our newer engineers greatly and, and it also provided consistency, um, across all of the control authorities and there were those orders. Um, I also have an open door policy, um, always available for my team to come in and talk and discuss anything. Um, very open and willing to have that talk. I enjoy having conversations with my team about just about anything that has to do with the job.
Thank you. Um, can you share an example of a challenging situation that you faced professionally? Um, and what was your approach to that and the outcome of the situation?
Um, this last summer, I think if you remember, it was in the end of June, it got really hot. We had that hundred degree day. Um, in Danvers, we were already operating on a contingency in our twenty-three K V system. Um, so during the middle of the day, the loads were creeping up on some of our, uh, other circuits. So we moved some load around. And shortly after we did that, we had, we lost another twenty-three K V circuit where cable failed and actually failed into another five K V circuit. Um, it was, uh, with the loads really high, it was during the middle of the day. Um, there was only so many places we could put the load. Um, it was very challenging. So my engineering group at Control Authorities, uh, got right on to looking at how we could possibly pick up the customers. We had about a third of the town out. Um, during the heat at the same time, um, this year is the first year we had a five megawatt battery on a twenty-three K V system. And they had had some issues the night before charging, so they were actually charging in the middle of the day um, to add to the load problems. Um, so that was different. So, um, once that started, uh, we got the team going on, looking at possible ways to, to pick up the customers as quickly as possible and put the load where we weren't gonna be overload in other circuits. Um, they noticed that the battery was charging, uh, they immediately reached out to them and had them stop charging. Um, that was a semi-difficult decision because we knew it was gonna be a peak that later that day that we wanted to hit. And there was financial incentives for both the battery operator and Danvers Electric. Um, so that was the thing. And then once we got the crews in the manhole, we found that one circuit actually went, damaged another circuit. And the, um, material that was down there was older, been there for a while, um, was non-standard construction. Um, we started, so I had, I got the lineup set to look at our underground, um, stock. Um, we quickly determined that we didn't have the stock to make the repairs. So I reached out to our line contractor and got that process rolling for them to look at if they had the stock and if they were able to come and help us, which they were. Um, in the meantime, to add to it, um, Danvers also has a, a new town manager that started about a month or two previously. And this was the kind of the first foray into having a big, large outage. Um, so, um, me and my team made sure we, we kept town hall on the prize of, of the restoration efforts. And as we picked up customers, made sure that they knew the customer counts, we made sure our outage map on the website was up to date. So customers could come and see as we were restoring what, where, what was still out. Um, and then I also was working closely with the business division. Um, they typically don't get involved in outage. They take calls during the day, but they don't get too much involved in putting stuff into O M S or, um, or handling that larger or extended thing, unless it's an actual storm. So this was a kind of not a storm, so they weren't prepared for that. But we do actually buy annual training with our business division to keep them up to date on how to import calls into our O M S and they did that, um, very well. And they were able to also tell customers and give them updates. Uh, one of the outcomes of keeping a town hall up to date was that five K V circuit that was in that hole that got damaged or had no backup from that point to where the customers were. And approximately eighty customers were gonna be out for the duration of the repairs, which ended up being about nineteen hours. But keeping town hall up to date, they were able to reach out to the Red Cross. They got the Red Cross involved and they were able to assist the people down there. There was, actually it was a, a Danvers housing authority, um, down there. So, um, the customers all got restored very quickly with the exception of the people that were out for the repairs. Um, we got them all back on within two to three hours. Um, everybody, it went very smoothly and, uh, went very well.
Um, so how would you apply what you've learned from that particular situation? Um, to kind of leading our M L D through a, a potential future event similar?
So, uh, it relates as in I had a, a few different departments that were involved. They had, uh, and along with external consultants, contractors, trying to keep the teams working together towards a common goal. So we're, we're able to, with the business division, um, lineups, engineering, tech services, had a big play with our substation group, the switching. I'm just getting everybody in different departments to work together towards a common goal and have a successful.
Um, are there any systems or strategies that you would prioritize making sure we're available to ensure continuity and resilience in the system?
Yes, so, um. The current, um, this is, so I can repeat that again?
Oh, sure. Um, what kind of systems or strategies would you wanna ensure are in place to, like, to help ensure continuity or resilience in that situation?
So one of the things I, I, I mentioned was training, cross-training in our business division, the call takers to take the calls when information's important and, and how to input that into our O M S system so that those calls come over to the, the, the engineering side of things. So they could help some, it, the O M S system, it, it. It, the OMS system, it predicts where the outages are and what the causes are. It helps narrow down some, some of that. So working through that, that was some stuff that we've done. We do that biannually so that it's kept up to date. With the switching and tagging, um just like I said, even like what I just mentioned with keeping those, the common language up to date. So it was allowed. The um engineers to write the orders consistently. If they deviate them up and they, some, a couple of engineers are writing some orders and others are writing others. Um over time, we've added all the loading information and percent loads of downstream of each device on our one lines. So that's there so that during any situation, they can quickly see what they're gonna pick up, possibly pick up on another circuit to make sure they don't overload anything else. Uh we have our monthly load reads that we keep in the database. We have our skater system that goes in the database and everybody's up to date on how to make those reports and. To keep the continuity going, um because this is not normal.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Hal, but I think, yes.
Jason, welcome. Thanks for flying and it's good to see you here. So there's eight minutes here and, and we wanna just get through the questions of like the, the strategic vision and long-term planning and the challenges. That we're gonna face and what do you see as RMLD's most pressing strategic challenges over the next five to ten years? And how would you prioritize addressing them?
Okay, uh one of the, the main things I think that's gonna be your priority over the next five to ten years is electric utilization and low growth. Um I know we've been talking about it for a while, but it is gonna, it is gonna start to take off. And I think that it tend to be ahead of it and be, and have the stuff in place because some of the. Possible solutions to that, um like system upgrades or upgrading substations are long-term. Um lengthy projects that need to be done, um so some of that you need to start now. Um be, between long lead times and materials and the design, um but also looking at non-wires alternatives. Um trying to look at the demand response programs, getting those, see what works, what doesn't work, trying to make improvements on those. Whether it's the time of use rates or other rates, trying to limit and move load around to other squads and encourage that behavior. There's a lot of different ways to like try to get that. Also. It's gonna probably ebb and flow. It might ramp up for a short period of time and then kind of plateau or, or even slightly drop and it's gonna ramp up again. So to make sure that the staff, that the staff in there may be looking at consultants for those quick ramp ups, so to bring into it. Support the, their in-house resources and then when that kind of plateaus or drops off, you can go back to maintaining stuff with the current staff. So you're not augmenting staff and then left it, um potentially when it, if it slows down, happen too much stuff.
Um so yeah, you mentioned both the, the traditional engineering approach to solving the problem and also the. Software kind of demand side response becoming increasingly important. Um anything anymore you wanna elaborate on that and, and also how do you balance short-term operational needs with those long-term strategic goals?
So, um for like demand response, I, I know um. There's been a lot of discussion here on the board uh that I've noticed and. Just kind of reviewing those programs, trying to figure out what works, try different things, have the team come up with different solutions. Um balancing with the short-term stuff. I think um what needs to, what could happen is that RMLD staff, I think is very talented. Um maybe they've been pulled in different directions over recently, uh trying to get back to the core. Business side of things and do what uh electric utility does well, keeping the lights on, keeping the rates down. Um getting the system up to speed and improvement and focus on those areas. And then as those start to take off, start bringing in some of these. Additional um projects that might be a, a different way of handling things.
Thank you. And um when you were talking about that, uh that kind of crisis you had in Danvers. That just made me look up, uh you know, by, by twenty fifty, we're gonna have seven to twenty-six more days per year. According to the state website of greater than ninety-degree days. So. It's gonna be a lot more days like that coming up. And um so when you, you know, how, how are you gonna en- engage staff but also stakeholders, including? Customers in, you know, kind of being ready for that and, and being ready for the more crises that are sure to come, like what you faced in Danvers that day?
Yeah, um trying to look at the various programs that are there today, um. I know the emails go out for the shave the peak, shed the peak, um. Working on those, don't necessarily, may, may or may not work, maybe trying to find some incentives for customers or whether it's time of use rates. Um looking at, you could have um integrators department start looking at um customers that. Um are on the regular rate and then comparing that to a uh time of use rate to see if they maybe are, might already be saving money. If they switched to, just like not even changing any habits. Um and then retargeting and reaching out to those customers to try to get them on the time of use rate. Um to increase that and then they might find additional incentive to change their behavior and even save more money.
Great. The last question in this category is to please share an example where you identified a strategic issue or opportunity and led the organization to address it. Such as in your, well, go ahead.
Repeat that again?
Uh just, just an example uh of where you may have identified a strategic issue or opportunity. And led the organization to address it.
Okay. Um, one of the things we, we had um after coming out COVID, the, the transformers lead times really grew and. And the pricing rarely went up. Um and we're looking at our current inventory. So one of the strategic things we did was we had just enabled, uh started a, a new. Transformer load, uh overload transformer program where we did, went to a. Essentially it wasn't an overload program, it was more targeting transformers of a certain age with a certain loading and a certain area or um. If it was underground, actually doing inspections and grading them. We were just getting that off the ground where it was more than just looking at overloads when that happened. Um so what we did was we put that aside for the time being. We started. Keeping our transformers in for uh if we had failures or new customers that needed them. Um and then transformers that we would have normally had junked if they were in good shape and of a certain age, we actually started keeping them. And then we looked at our ordering process and we were getting quoted lead times back of, of uh four years. Um so we looked at what we thought, we, we started looking at run rates of transformers and how often we, we install them and, and use them and. Went out to bid for a four years' worth of transformers. But we didn't just do our normal ordering, um we ordered all, all sorts of sizes and voltages and we took a look at our inventory. And we strategically picked certain sizes of certain voltages that could meet multiple needs. Um even if it wasn't ideal and reduced our ordering to a certain stock and then put that out. So that, that we could do, so we'd reduce how much we had to order, reduce the cost of that. Um luckily for us, uh after we put that order, I was roughly about two million dollars with the transformers. Uh they actually, most of them came in within the first year or two years. Um so we received those, um we had to, we had a little bit of, throw on some storage, but we were able to get them and then. Now um it's working out for us because we've identified some more transformers that need to be replaced as well as um. Trying how the tariffs play out with the pricing. We might have actually, it seemed expensive at the time. Might actually be a little bit less expensive than it could be if tariffs hit.
Thank you very much. Great. Uh hi Jason, um good to see you here. So this section is on execution resilience and results and just like the others, uh there's just a few questions here and. Um so we'll, we'll dive in. Um you talked about the, kind of that crisis day in, in Danvers. Um this one, this question, this first question says, can you share an example of a time when a project didn't go as planned? So you had, uh you know, the, I, I think the spirit behind the question here is just if, if you had an objective, things were perhaps going along swimmingly. And then all of a sudden went off the rails. Um describe that if you could. And then maybe talk a little bit about what you feel like you might have learned from that and how that impacts the way that you lead today.
I mentioned in my brief overview that I was on that uh social assignment for a couple of years, working on the project management playbook for National Grid. And so we go through the process of bringing in all the different departments, reviewing the different processes, getting their feedback on what works and doesn't. What, trying to make the process more efficient. We brought in the distribution line side, um got them involved in that process. Uh went through the whole thing, um developed the common process that we could use across all three different businesses. And then uh when I went to go implement it, um I, I received a lot of pushback from the distribution line side of the business. Saying that the project, um that that process would actually. Cause more harm than good because it would make things go take longer or um they just. It was hard for them to follow. It didn't necessarily meet all the different types of projects as. Distribution products tend to be, they can be of various sizes, small, medium, large, where transmission and substation projects typically to be on the larger side. And so um part of that was um that it was kind of a big roadblock to kind of get that implemented. Like I, um various department heads together, held different meetings, um got support from senior leadership that wanted this to happen. Um mul- multiple times um with them to try to, to get that through and then um we were at. And finally, after a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, we were able to make some tweaks and changes to the process that met most of their needs. And then we were able to get it implemented into the business. But some of the things I learned from that is, um you know. You meet and you get the various stakeholders together and you try to, try to get everybody to agree on, on something, but then. Time goes, it was a two-year process. Some of the people that were there in the beginning weren't there in the end. So just trying to keep everybody and as. People change out, trying to keep them involved in the project and keeping them up to date so that when it gets to the very end. Um you know, they're not hit with something they weren't expecting, um. And I, I try to carry that with everything I do. I just try to make sure I keep all the different stakeholders up to date as often as I possibly can.
That's great. Sounds like you had to adjust your expectations a little bit and sort of re-communicate uh with everybody and. Kind of get them back on board and everything. So yeah, that's, that's terrific. So I'm gonna read this question, a, a natural answer would have been what you experienced in Danvers that you just described over the summer. Uh so. I'm gonna suggest perhaps a slightly uh different alternative in terms of the answer, but it just says, can you describe a time? When you faced significant operational challenge or unexpected setback and you had to act quickly to deliver results? Um i- is there a time perhaps when that operational challenge took place with people? Uh with a team or something like that that just didn't go quite um how it was supposed to and it turned into. Uh a challenge or a unexpected setback?
Sure. Um another situation that we had in Danvers was back in two thousand eighteen, in October, we got actually hit with a, a bomb cyclone. Um I know it's kind of a newer term, but basically uh uh it formed right over Danvers. Um and at like uh two in the morning, um and it wreaked havoc on our system. Uh we have six twenty-three KV circuits that feed the town and four of them went down during this event. And all of them got damaged at the beginning of the feeder, um significant damage, trees down, snap poles. At the time I was an engineer, um the on-call engineer was responding to it. I, I happened to wake up and see all the crazy alarms. And on my phone and I, I reached out to him and, and offered my help and then I immediately came in at, and. We started to try and piece together exactly what happened because it's three in the morning and, and, and uh you're trying to look at. Your skater and your OMS and, and nothing's making sense because so much stuff was, was damaged and out. Um that it just, it was, it took a challenge. We were getting other people in, um. It ended up being a, a three-day restoration event for Danvers, which is actually probably, I think it's their longest restoration event. That, that anybody there is aware of. And we have some people that's been there for thirty years, called it like the, the worst storm they've had. We were, it went fairly well because we were able to get everybody in, started getting everyone teams and on storm uh roles. But in the past, they had never been hit that hard. So nobody, there wasn't like specific storm assignments, um you know, you do this or you do that, um. We were slow to realize the damage, the extent of the damage to the system. So we, we um. We didn't put out any calls for mutual aid, um until later that, uh later that day, we actually tried to, to get first get our line contractor. That we had on, on and uh they were, they were also busy, but they were gonna get us, but it was gonna take a couple, a, a day to get there, um. The NEPA mutually network that's there today wasn't that, the ease of use of that system wasn't there in twenty eighteen. Um we did call our neighbors, um PVD and Middleton and we were able to get some help from them. Um but um in that, in that process, uh we also weren't able to pick every circuit up. And keep, get every customer back on and we were able to work with puberty light to get them to agree to, to, we have a tie with them. And uh to get them to pick up some of our customers for the couple of days while we, we made restoration efforts. Over that, some of the things that didn't go well because we didn't have clear roles and responsibilities, there was a lot of. Overlap and duplication of sending people out to the same place multiple times. Uh or um not knowing exactly if this was done or not. Um I think overall it was a very um successful restoration because it was, it was only three days. Um but there was a lot of listen line that came out of that. So um since then, we've worked and then, and as when I became engineering operations manager, we have. Revisited our, our major emergency plan. Um we've, we've come, working on completely overhauling it. It's in draft right now, but we're, have a clear rule, uh reporting structure. Clear our roles and responsibilities um for what people are doing, what they're responsible for. And then we're gonna be training on that and we're gonna do um exercises where we mock exercises so that everybody gets trained and. It started in two, twenty thousand eighteen, we're in twenty twenty-five. It, it took a while to, to move forward because those things also don't happen very often. So. With everything else going on, um it kind of took a long time to get there, but that was definitely an event.
Yeah, that's great. Um okay, last question here and this one has to do with accountability and uh. Follow-through uh from the people that you're leading, but how do you ensure accountability and follow-through when leading complex initiatives?
Um I try to um with my team, uh to give them um objectives and, and timelines to put them in. Um you know, we have regular uh meetings, whether it's with the entire staff or um with individuals to discuss. Um getting, making sure that projects are completed on time and when they're needed, um. Uh some other examples, uh when I was in National Grid as a project manager, it's more of a matrix organization. So. Um I was a project manager responsible for delivering projects that touched many different departments across National Grid, um but none of those people reported to me. So trying to get, make sure that those projects moved, stayed on schedule, on budget. And in scope, um it's challenging when you have to learn ways to, to. Help work with people to get them to do things when they have competing goals because they're, they're in a different department, they may be competing projects. Uh one of the ways I, I, I found that helped with the accountability was I, I really enjoy face-to-face conversation with people. So. Um when I would talk to some of my, whether it was like an engineering team member or a construction team member, um. Some of us also in this large building, a wall of them and a lot of people would just use the messenger or an email or pick up the phone. I like to go walk across the building. Um sit down with them, make sure they have the time and, and have the discussion and talk about the project, where they, they stand on the deliverables. Uh when they think they can get it to me. But I found that I got a lot. Better answers and upfront honesty uh back to when I was gonna get this by having that face-to-face conversation. And I've carried that through today to, to my management style.
That's great. Thanks, Jason.
Go over to me, Jason. All right, I'm gonna be asking a couple labor and organizational culture questions. The first one, uh you know, uh RMLD is a union-based organization with ongoing contract negotiations. What's your philosophy on contract negotiations? And how have you approached your previous leadership roles with, with dealing with union workforce?
Okay. Um first, I'd like to, when I try to negotiate, I just say clear goals and objectives, try to be upfront and transparent about. What's available to discuss, um part of, um in Danvers, I'm, as the engineer ops manager, I'm more of a, a. Side team member on the negotiations where I provide information or stuff like that, but. A lot of the times what I've done is I've gone through and read the contracts, look for areas for improvement or any gray areas that may have caused. Um potential issues with like dealing with certain situations to make sure we try to clean up some of that, that language that doesn't linger. Um that can also become, depending on what it is, could become a bargaining chip for something else. I've actually been on the other side of negotiations where for a short time in Danvers, I was the union president for the engineering group. Which was also unique because it wasn't just electric employees that are in that group. There was also a lot of the town. Uh rest of the town department group. So trying to, to look at that and trying to figure out what to negotiate and that when you have a bunch of different. Departments that do completely different things and what they need and want and, and uh so kind of pull that together. As far as um dealing with the unions, I have a very good relationship with, I have two unions in Danvers, the one that deep for the, for the uh. And engineers and the, and then I have uh, uh ASME, which is our lineups and our tech services. I work very closely with them. Uh where everything's been very smooth. They, they know when we have contract issues, we work through it, we talk through it. Um a couple of compromise and we're in a good spot.
Okay, um, next part of the question is, how would you foster positive organizational culture?
Yeah, um, first off, um, like am I kind of lead by example? I uh make sure I'm always present. I got the open door, very open and direct my communication. I'm very transparent. My actions meet my words. Um, and then as far as culture, I got a couple of small stories. Um, so our, in our line department. Not too long ago, um, you know, the, we did have few issues down down our line department with certain things going on. But um I had always tried to push to get a a rodeo team for the NEPA rodeo competition and I couldn't get anybody to. To ever sign up. So, you know, we were trying to, they said that they would like us to get them certain things so that they could practice and and. Or tools and whatever they needed for it. So I had assigned a person to work with them on that, thinking that would get that going. And then they were talking and we were trying to get updates and then there still wasn't a lot of movement. So we went down and and sat down with them and said, I I'd like to have a rodeo team. I think it would be very good for for Danvers to have one. I think it'd be a lot of fun. I think it would help improve things. What do I or we need to do so that we can get at least three people to sign up for a team? And then they gave their list of like what we want. We would need a bunch of tools and accessories. Uh, we want a practice yard. We want to practice time because if we're going to do this, we want to compete. And I and I said, that's it, we're we're going to do it. And so um to make sure that they knew that, I I met with them every other week. Got their list of what they needed, started having it ordered, it started showing up. So you know, I have, I didn't have just one team, I had two teams this year. Um, the first year after meeting that demand, um so half of our line force competed in the NEPA rodeo. Um, they did pretty well. Um, everybody was super motivated after that, super like they want to go win it next year. Um, the rest of the team that didn't enjoy, well, you know, to make sure there wasn't any, you know, while they were practicing, you know, we allowed them to do some things. That what we weren't, I'll ask them to do major construction projects. Um, but get some things done, but um and the culture down there improved immensely. Um, one of the other things that we we did that that has worked is. Because I, as I mentioned, the the business division is DPW and electric. Um, so there and they oversee the the billing systems and getting the bills up to the customers. And in the past, um like with our metadata management system, when that was put into place, they kind of ran it. So they didn't allow a lot of engineering access to that data. Um, we were able to get a transformer load report, but it it eventually broke. And so I worked closely with the the business manager, business manager. Um, we started meeting regularly. I started, I now have a bi-weekly meeting with business, my engineering and the IT, which is also town, not electric. Um, where we walk through all of the different priorities that we have and that where we intersect and try to get that going. And we started fostering a good relationship where we got a lot of other reports into the metadata management for engineering purposes, like voltage, on-demand voltage reports. Um, and so that culture got better. And then to even make it better, um the town has a Halloween competition, it's that time of the year. Um, last year, um, the business division and the uh engineering, the electric engineering got together. Decided on a a a a theme, uh and we all dressed up in that theme because the town is a a awesome contest. And we went down, everybody got involved, they had a good time, we went down, we actually won the competition. Um, we came back and um it just started fostering some of those relationships where you might not necessarily talk to everybody all the time. But um it just kind of got that spirit going and.
What what was your costume?
It was on, uh, it was dodgeball. So the business division was not your average shows and the electric engineering group was the purple colors.
Right, that moment, another question. What support or structures do you find most effective in leading labor relations?
So for support, um, I understand that in in writing, you know, the general manager would be the go-between between the labor unions and and the board. So the support that in that instance that I look for is, you know, what are the goals, what are the guidelines, what are the rails? Um, that I need to negotiate within and then you, you know, try to work towards that. Um, and then depending on, and then have meeting up and giving updates on that and getting feedback as to where things might need to go or change. Or what the feeling is, but from a support standpoint, it's more just given the clear guidelines and and goals.
And uh one, one more, uh can you share a specific example of challenging labor negotiations have led you or per- what you've led or participated in? What was the situation and how did you work towards resolution? And you kind of answered those already, so. I think that that.
Do you have anything else?
Not really.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mike, come in. Allow you. Um, I'm going to be talking about uh stakeholder engagements and communication. And so the first question would be is, how would you foster trust and maintain open, transparent communications with key stakeholders? Including the board of commissioners who are the ultimate decision-makers?
Okay, um, throughout my career, I've I've had to do that and my, I'll just start my current role as engineer operation manager at Danvers. I present our life board monthly um to keep them up to date on any engineering operations, construction projects that that are going on. Um, in the electric division, so I keep them very informed. I I have handouts, I present every, every month. I I keep updating on reliability numbers, stuff like that. From also um from National Grid, it's not necessarily uh an elected board, but they have, they have the leadership team or the leadership board. And as a project manager, you would have to go to their monthly meetings to to present a paper, you know, to request funding and schedule to get approval for all all that. So one example of of that was um, one of the big projects was to replace a an existing three forty-five KV. Gas insulated substation to replace it in kind. And we had gone through the RFP process and we wanted to award and we had a couple finalists. And um we had been kind of negotiating with both of them and it became clear during that process. That one of the manufacturer vendors was, had a better proposal. But at that point, when we looked at price, they were uh more a million dollars more than the other. Um, so typically, um, we would have to go with a lower-priced one. So uh worked with the project team um to develop a a good case as to why the the slightly more expensive. Uh, substation um was the way to go and and why I felt that and presented that to the board and got their approval to. Kind of not do the standard and 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 that so keeping everybody, having the team. Um, stakeholders, um, for uh one of the key stakeholders obviously is customers. So um with my team in Danvers, um I make sure that we keep our our outage map up to date. Uh, as close as possible, we don't have a twenty-four hour dispatch, so it's not like in the middle of the night, it takes a little bit to get it up to date. But we make sure that any outage gets out to the outage map as quickly as they can do it, make sure that's communicated. We have a process where we uh reach out to the communications team for town hall to make sure they can push out outage notifications. Out to the social media. And then from a project standpoint, on any um larger construction project. We make sure that we either put out uh door knockers or letters to any of the others in the area prior to the start of construction to let them know what to expect. Um, upcoming and then a number they can reach out to to get any information or if they have any questions. So we do um, the the stakeholder, we keep up to date all the time.
So uh that blends into the second part of the question of uh from your perspective. And uh style of leadership, what do you think is your most critical stakeholders? If you were the general manager, how would you build that relationship with those people? As far as uh some of the people that you mentioned are the groups that you just mentioned.
Okay, um, for reading, I would think some of the biggest key stakeholders, um, obviously the board of commissioners in the cab. Um, the the ratepayers, um, because Reading um has ter- uh four towns that report to it. Keeping each of the town managements uh up to date, uh that's a key stakeholder. And then, of course, the employees are another important stakeholder. So being open and transparent with them, communicating um all the different objectives. Having common goals, you know, the goals get set by the board, GM has goals, making sure that some of those goals fit the down into the the rest of the. The departments and teams to make sure that everybody's going in the same direction.
All right, and last, um, so with three parts to this whole question, the last one is just to give us a specific example of when. You successfully engage with the uh board of Danvers or here and align with the strategic initiatives. To build that uh what your vision is and how that moves forward.
Can you repeat that?
Um, so can you share a specific example of when a time you successfully engaged with the board? Or other stakeholders to align with a strategic initiative and build a mutual confidence in in the outcome?
Um, I I point back to that example, um, with like that National Grid. I know it's a little bit different board, but it was an executive board on. Moving forward and making sure they're in alignment with that project because there was some very specific needs with that, that G I substation. There was a lot of wetlands in that area and that, you know, um, trying to have a solution that minimize wetlands impacts. Um, one of the vendors was was better at it, but making sure that we were able to get that project through because of the initiative. Because um gas insulated substations um have SF six in them. Uh, so and now that we really needed to replace that one because it was leaking. Um, and that was a very important climate objective goal, strategic goal for National Grid at the time was to that to reduce those SF six emissions. Yeah, so making sure that we were able to push the right solution to that with the minimal impact. Um, so even though the project, the the RFP was maybe a million dollars more, not having to replicate wetlands. All throughout the community, um, probably could have, it might have actually overall saved money in the long run.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Getting near the end, Jason. Last one to ask you questions. What do you hope to accomplish in your first year as general manager?
Um, what I'd like to accomplish in the first year as a manager at Reading would be to um come in, um, get to know all. Um, I have some luxury of being on the, I've been on the advisory board, knowing what some of the projects are and some of the initiatives. But coming in, getting to know the the different departments and groups, um what they're working on, um what are the priorities. Um, get getting everybody together, um, start to push forward. Um, but I mentioned earlier, um, kind of getting back, taking a look at what they're working on, whether the projects, whether the priorities. Finding a common vision and goal to get to the core uh business of our Reading Light Department. Um, which is keeping the lights on, um, low cost and uh increasingly carbon free or neutral. Um, trying to get back into those core aspects, try to pick the the major projects that would have the biggest bang for your buck. Getting everybody starting to focus on those, um, working together as a team to start pushing that. And then um and gaining trust with that is along the way, being very open to my communication. And um expectations so that everybody is is clear. And then start to uh maybe towards the end of the year, start to look at how that's going and then what else can we start to add in? That might be a a stretch goal. And so that might be some other criteria.
Uh, good, thank you. Uh, how do you find success in leadership role like this? And how would you measure it? What sort of metrics would you be looking for as the measure and monitor a GM? I mean, been part of discussions of that sort of thing on the cab, what?
Um, ma- uh making sure that um that what Reading is going to is on, having the budget. Um, working towards the budget, staying staying within the budget. Uh, would look at certain me- metrics on that throughout the year, looking at spend versus actual spend versus budget. Set to look at some of the metrics on how we forecast an overspend on certain things, are we looking to underspend on other things? Um, success would be, um, um, some of the things would be like the union negotiations, trying to get those wrapped up. Making sure those were were complete. Um, I would look at that as success. Also, um, just the culture, just starting to see it's, if we're looking to change culture, it's a slow process, but just looking to see some positives. In the culture, um, just seeing how, just to gauge and on how the employees are doing, having check-ins with department heads. Just trying to feel like i- is the, is it starting to get better? And then making and looking at the schedules of that, all all the, when you look at the budget, it's basically a large portfolio of projects and project management, which I experience. It's just are we on track to complete what we said we're going to complete? And um and if not, what can we do to get it back on track?
Um, before I end with the the big question, just one more in terms of logistics. Are there any constraints that might affect your ability to start in January twenty twenty-six?
No.
Um, okay, last question. What, why do you want this job? Why do you feel you're the right fit for the GM role at RMLD?
Um, yeah. No, I um, haven't been a member of the advisory board. Um, looking at the initiatives, some of the initiatives that Reading is doing is very exciting. I I I want to be a part of that. Um, I have some of that in Danvers. Um, it's a little bit different setup in Danvers where we're a part of the town. So some of that stuff is a little bit harder to accomplish in Danvers, even though um I I enjoy my time in Danvers. But some of this, the the stuff that Reading is doing and trying to get into the future, I'm excited about, want to get involved with. I'm also a ratepayer, so I feel like my um, the Reading's goals and my goals as a ratepayer are in alignment. Um, I like that my power does not go out and I like to keep it that way. Um, I'm also very passionate about this industry. Um, I'm always involved, I'm always coming in, helping my team out um off hours if needed. Um, I I love the electric utility industry. I I love to talk shop. I can talk all day about it. Um, just very passionate and I I just feel like Reading and this role would help me get there and continue in that realm of what I've been doing in Danvers. And just have that little extra um, things that I might not, so they do endeavor that I can do it.
Um, any questions for us before we, but you have the rest of the evening off?
Uh, no, I think I'm good at this time.
Well, thank you very much. Um, is there anything else that you were hoping that we would ask you that we didn't ask you? And you want to share?
Uh, no, I think I touched on most of it, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you again. It's great to see you here. Um, we appreciate your time and interest. And um, I know sitting in front of a panel like this is not easy, so I appreciate um uh your uh your engagement on this. And thank you.
Thank you for having me. Thanks.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, so um what we will do is we're going to take a ten-minute break. Um, we can take care of your needs. And then also um maybe just give yourself a little bit of time to reflect on your notes and scores while it's fresh. Um, and then we will start again at one of the five, seven, ten. Uh, walked the walk and talked, and it's really something I put into practice. Um, I. Uh, especially when I started in the distribution system, even though I had over twenty five years in energy. Remember, this was a new area for me and I was very open and honest with my team. And I think they really enjoyed it because then they became like teachers and we worked collaboratively together and I'll give you one example. I came in and I had been working on line loss um analysis when I was at UMass Lowell and I came into. Merrimack and I noticed that we had fourteen point seven percent line loss and I'm like, wait a second, this is way too high. For a distribution system like that is on average about six percent. So I brought. Everyone in Rome together and I said, hey, let's start brainstorming, let's figure out where this could be and actually it was my. First uh li- uh first uh, yeah, I think it was Apprentice Bill, his dad had been the um. Superintendent or General Foreman and he said, could it be that transformers were keeping warm over in Burnside? So Burnside was a substation that we had abandoned and had consolidated over into twenty federal way. Um, when, so he's, I was like, what do you mean? He's, well, we're keeping those transformers warm because somebody thinks they're valuable and we could sell them. So I'm like, well, that could very much be the cause, but being new, I didn't want to just. You know, rip the plug and said, maybe this person had a valid reason to keep them warm. So I went out. On an effort of trying to sell transformers, substation transformers, great price, they're for sale, come pick them up. And give us a little money and I found out they wanted to charge me. Everyone that came said six thousand, five thousand, ten thousand. I'm like, no, I don't want to pay, I want you to take them. And I was like, you can take them for free and uh, but nobody had the four K B. That, you know, so it was a very limited market. I finally found someone out of New York that paid me a thousand and took them away. And when we took those offline, we went down to six percent. So that's where I think I, and everyone really liked that. Model, we used it several times other cases, but it was really for me to say, come on, you guys know you're out there, you're on the frontline. Tell me what you think. And so that is where the team, I like to mentor people too, um, I had a customer service rep. She had never done customer service and now she's a rising star in customer service. So she had never done social media, she'd never did web management, something I have a lot of area of expertise on and. She loves it now and when she came to the job, I knew she had the right temperament, the right in intellect. But she was concerned that she didn't have the skills and I said, that's okay, I can mentor you and now you'll be um a rising star and. And that's what she is. So those are.
And then I went to work for Repsol. I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they were an LNG company that built a facility up in Hannahport. And they brought down LNG gas down the Maritimes into Beverly and Drakeett. And then they had to sell all of their assets when YPF got in Argentina, political mess and everything. So there wasn't much of a future there. And I started also, I understanding that gas in New England did not have a long life to it, that there was a movement towards going to renewables and less dependence on gas. And the funny thing is, I was very close to the renewable community because they embraced me in the beginning because they were like, you're going to get rid of oil and coal for us. Thank you. Thank you. And then all of a sudden, we got rid of oil and coal. And now they were like, now we need to get rid of you. So, which was understandable. I could understand the, the hope of going to non-carbon. So I started to look around to see where I could go into a field in TRC, which an engineering company knew the president there and said, I want to get really into the electrical side. So he put me in charge of business development and a vertical, which also had some gas, but a lot more electric. So I started working on large transmission projects and very large substation work and got to know the electric side really well. But I had a tremendous interest in the renewable side. So I did start working a little bit on the NECC project in Hydro, which brought me to UMass Lowell because as part of the NECC project down from Maine, from Hydro Quebec, they did a partnership with UMass Lowell. And UMass Lowell, at the time, she's the chancellor now, she said, can you come on the team and help us with energy innovation? So I started working on wind star and offshore wind projects and started to look at other technologies to enhance. We did infrared drones and things of that nature to provide energy efficiency and things of that nature. And then I was working at UMass Lowell when someone said Merrimack is looking to hire a general manager. They have gone through, I think at that time it was four GMs in one and a half years, and they really don't have anybody interested in the job. Because I said, one thing I would really like to get involved in is understand the distribution on a local level. And they said, so here's your chance, run for it. So I interviewed and got hired. And I've been a general manager at Merrimack for three years. And that brings me to that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hopefully, that was short enough.
That was great. Just fine. So I'm going to just ask a few questions around sort of leadership, decision-making, crisis management. So if you could just start by describing your leadership and management style, and specifically, how do you handle disagreements with your team or make difficult decisions?
Yeah, sure. So I truly, I know people use the words collaborative and team, but I actually walked the walk and talked. And it's really something I put into practice. I, especially when I started in the distribution system, even though I had over twenty-five years in energy, remember, this was a new area for me and I was very open and honest with my team. And I think they really enjoyed it because then they became like teachers and we worked collaboratively together. And I'll give you one example. I came in and I had been working on line loss analysis when I was at UMass Lowell. And I came into Merrimack and I noticed that we had fourteen point seven percent line loss. And I'm like, wait a second, this is way too high for a distribution system like that. It's on average about six percent. So I brought everyone in Rome together and I said, hey, let's start brainstorming. Let's figure out where this could be. And actually, it was my first, my first, yeah, I think it was Apprentice Bill. His dad had been the superintendent or general foreman. And he said, could it be that transformers were keeping warm over in Burnside? So Burnside was a substation that we had abandoned and had consolidated over into twenty federal way. When, so he's, I was like, what do you mean? He's, well, we're keeping those transformers warm because somebody thinks they're valuable and we could sell them. So I'm like, well, that could very much be the cause, but being new, I didn't want to just, you know, rip the plug and said, maybe this person had a valid reason to keep them warm. So I went out on an effort of trying to sell transformers, substation transformers, great price. They're for sale. Come pick them up and give us a little money. And I found out they wanted to charge me. Everyone that came said six thousand, five thousand, ten thousand. I'm like, no, I don't want to pay. I want you to take them. And I was like, you can take them for free. And, but nobody had the 4KV that, you know, so it was a very limited market. I finally found someone out of New York that paid me a thousand and took them away. And when we took those offline, we went down to six percent. So that's where I think, and everyone really liked that model. We used it several times, other cases. But it was really for me to say, come on, you guys know you're out there, you're on the front line. Tell me what you think. And so that is where the team, I like to mentor people too. I had a customer service rep. She had never done customer service. And now she's a rising star in customer service. So she had never done social media. She'd never did web management, something I have a lot of area of expertise on. And she loves it now. And when she came to the job, I knew she had the right temperament, the right intellect, but she was concerned that she didn't have the skills. And I said, that's okay. I can mentor you. And now you'll be a rising star. And that's what she is. So those are basically my management style. How do I handle crisis? Well, first of all, I wrote the crisis management plan for Repsol. So if anybody knows, gas is very concerned about safety. It's something we drill in every day on the gas. So that has always been one of my top priority. I will never compromise on safety. I've grown up in the energy industry where we were given reports, zero incident days. Congratulations, zero incident day. I start all my meetings with a safety tip. Every meeting, we do a safety tip. And people know that and the guys come prepared. Okay, we got to have a safety tip. She's going to ask us, what's the safety tip? So that's it. And so the crisis communication, I had to do a detailed plan on how to handle it. It's basically preparing, planning, and executing. So when you do any kind of crisis communication plan, the best thing is to do simulated exercises. Because once people do lots of simulated exercises, when the incident happens, you just go into the mode that you have been trained on. And that's what I find is the success when you're dealing with crisis. Is everybody knows their role. Everybody knows what their responsibility is. And then you have contingencies because you're not going to always have all the same people that you need there. So you always say, you are the backup person for this. And you train them on that as well.
Can you share a specific example of a time that you led an organization through a major operational disruption, a system-wide outage or storm situation?
Well, I think it's one that you guys hopefully will never experience. I was very first year I was on the job, only a couple of months in. And our board of selectmen at ten o'clock in the night, the last issue that they took up, said, let's sell the light department. So I got into the office the next morning and people said, started popping up on our Facebook feed, hey, is light firemen still? I heard the selectman said they're selling it. And I was like, news to me. No one consulted me about this. So my commissioners came running in, everyone, the staff, like, are we for sale? We still, I'm like, getting information. So it turned out they did. They said at town meeting, they were going to try to sell us. It's, I can tell you everything about being sold. And they had to get two townwide meeting votes. They did it at the, hopefully crunch time so there wouldn't be enough time for organized. And I said, oh, well, we got a campaign on our hands. So I divided up. I called the union. I had the union come and I said, okay, I need money and I can't spend the light money. So hopefully you have some money because we need lawn signs. We need brochures. We need ads. And that's going to cost money and I cannot use light money. And they're like, okay, we'll pay. So I got that set. Then I called the commissioners. I said, have you ever campaigned? Oh, yeah. Well, we ran for like, I said, no campaign, like really campaign. And they're like, no, not really. So I, you know, said to them, but you have to be the face. I can't be out there. So you have to do the lawn signs. You have to do the, the literature drops and things of that nature. So they, they were, they were actually having sometimes fun with it. So they kind of did all that. We had a town meeting measure and normally they get about a hundred people for town meeting. We had, it was a cold, cold rainy night. And there was a mile long because you have to register to vote because this is going to take a two-thirds vote and had to be registered. A mile long of people waiting in the rain, in the cold to register. And the town was very strategic. They blocked all the parking. So people had to park two miles away and walk in. We had seven hundred and eighty-two people against selling the light fire and six for it. And we have three selectmen. They're all married. So talk about being thrown into a situation of crisis and the potential of people not having a job. That was one of the first salvos that they did. So, so we're good for a couple of years now and we're safe. But that was a learning experience. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that's, that's great. I'm going to just follow up with a, maybe just like a slightly different type of
Sure.
disruption in terms of your approach to dealing with, whether it's, you know, storm management or crisis, like an outage type of crisis.
Yeah. So I can give you two. I'll give you a storm one and then I'll give you a very interesting one. So we, as I told you, we no longer have Burnside Substation, but we never removed the reclosure to where our new substation was. So one day, the feeder from National Grid, they had an outage. And then we had to get the reclosure and the guys go, oh, the town's out. And I'm like, yeah, I know that. The phones are ringing off the home. Well, you know, the reclosure, somebody's got to go down there and take a computer that the former GM got from, put together with Radio Shack pieces and go up and kind of do something, like push these buttons. And I'm like, I'm like, and they're telling me this over the radio. I'm like, excuse me, did you say Radio Shack? They're like, yep. I'm like, no. So they got it up and going. And I called him and I said, oh, no, we're not doing this again. Reliability is my second most important thing. And I told you that when I started. So we ended up moving the reclosure over to the substation, getting two new reclosures. So I started to add a fiber fed, everything. We've never had a town wide outage. So I mean, it was very interesting that they were just like, that's just the way it is. And I'm like, no, that's not acceptable, you know, business as usual. So we are changing that. And then we had a townwide outage, very bad storm. And I learned a lot from it. And I put in a bunch of different procedures because they didn't have a set of procedures listed. Like we didn't have someone bird dogging because we only had four alignment. So basically, when you're doing two poles are down, it's the, you need all four to do the work. So I implemented a bird dogger where we brought in a retired lineman to come. So he is basically, we have him under contract. We don't pay him unless he works. And he was my bird dogger because they would rely on fire and police to do bird dogging. And we mostly had an incident. So this is what they had told me was the established procedure that when we're busy doing work in one end of the town and people are calling in. And fortunately, this way, the lady described it. I was like, I don't think that's communication. I think that that's our electric outlet, you know, like it's off the house. So I sent, I told my lineman, I don't care what you're doing. I need you to stop, go down and check it out. And he said, thank God you did because she had half hour and probably the house would have burnt down. So I implemented a whole new procedure. And I, like I said, I got this retired lineman to come on and do bird dogging for us. And that's what we put into place. So we have it really good. We have scripts that I've designed for all the customer service people to come in. We have basically a Facebook feed that we provide. People will tell them we're getting updates. We're working into updating our AMI system. So we had AMI, but they were, as I tell people, they were smart, but they're not smart anymore because they were in two thousand and eight. So our new AMI system will allow us to do an outage map and texting. So we're working towards that.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to Commissioner Talbot.
Thank you so much for coming and applying. And thank you for being here. I want to ask you about strategic vision and long-term planning. First question is, what do you see as RMLD's most pressing strategic challenges over the next five to ten years? And how would you prioritize addressing them?
Well, basically, from what I have been able to observe externally, and of course, I might change my point of view as I get in here internally, is that I'd like to get back to basics. I'd like to get to the three core pillars that I think are the basis of most of the MLPs. And what I see that is like, as I started off, I said, safety, both public and internal are their top priority. And that will not be compromised. I think reliability, resiliency, and looking at grid stability is very important as my next pillar. And then it does come down to cost, being cost competitive. I have read your roadway, your roadway technology paper that you wrote that was online. I found that very interesting. Loved it. I would add also drones. I think drones could play a role, especially in detecting line loss, just because of the infrared. I would process, look at your Hendrix. I'm at ninety-five percent Hendrix. I know roughly you're about eighty percent. I kind of found that somewhere. But I also looked at the age of transformers. We did a GIS layer on our transformers and we did an entire inventory. We did a crib analysis too on our GIS layer. So we are actually putting a schedule on our transformers and looking at through our crib analysis of having to upgrade or split the cribs. And then the other thing is getting into reliability is the vegetation management. I've actually implemented a vegetation management plan that actually came out in the RFP, very competitive. I broke it into zones and my zones were basically three piles, the main feed zone, which is your main line. And then I broke it into the different primary, the taps and then the sub-taps. So I broke that into three zones. The reason that I got an incredibly competitive price on my vegetation is I didn't do it based on, I said, give me a price on the zone. You can do it whenever you want, okay? As long as they beat the ordinance, it's noise ordering, that's all. But you just give me a price on the zone. And the rule is, it has to get completed in this timeframe. And it has to be inspected by my foreman. And then we're good to go. I got Mayor Tree came in extremely less than all others. And I finally, after I worded him a bit, I said, why? And he said, because the biggest problem I have is scheduling. And the fact is that you let me design my schedule. So I could have like a tree job that's a resident say in the neighborhood. And I could say, okay, go over and do that in the morning and the rest of the afternoon be in Merrimack. So he said, it was incredible. So he said, I wanted this because this is the way people should do vegetation. Leave it up to the tree company to schedule it instead of doing a time use. So I, those are the things, hopefully that answers your question, but those are my three pillars.
Just to follow up quickly on, on, on that same question. So obviously, load growth is predicted over the next couple of decades, perhaps very significant load growth. And at the same time, and since I brought it up last time, I'll do it again, is that there's a projection on the state's website. As far as we'll have seven to twenty-six more over ninety-degree days by the mid-century. So that's only twenty-five years from now than we do today. So things are getting hotter. And they're going to have a lot more of those heat waves. Plus you have load growth. So this provides, how do you, what are your strategies for addressing those challenges?
Well, that's why I focused in on the transformers and doing the crib analysis because we are that same concern that we have is to make sure that we have the adequate supply that we need out in the distribution system. The other thing is with that, I also was concerned about transmission and capacity costs going through the roof. And so one of the things I was able to do is I was able to purchase a one point four megawatt gas fire generator at our substation. It was a cost-sharing project with Duke that the town had put in. It hadn't, only ran for two years. It was offline for three years because of an SCR. An SCR part was not working. The SCR was not working. So, and I had, I read a lot. I read a lot of the journals and things of that nature. And I read, came across a speech that the CEO of Duke said, which he wanted to get out of carbon emitting programs or equipment or things of that nature. And I wrote him an out and I said, oh, by the way, I am the general manager in Merrimack Light and you have a carbon emitting generator on our property that we did a cost sharing project for. Would you like to sell it since I know you want to get out of this business? And he sent me a guy, a very young business development guy. He goes, oh, well, the PPA. And I said, yes, I know. I used to write PPAs. He said, there is a provision in there. You can buy it. And I said, yeah, but I don't want to buy it for two million dollars. He goes, well, what do you want to pay for? And I said, a yard sale price. And he goes, okay, I'm confused. And then time went by. And then I got this guy who was given the responsibility of getting rid of these carbon emitting generators. And he said, I have one question for you. What did you mean by yard sale price? I said, well, when you go to a yard sale and you pick up an item that says five dollars, you offer the person a dollar. If they fight with you, you say, okay, it's not a yard sale. It's an estate sale. And he says, oh, so you want it cheap? And I said, bingo. And he said, okay. Well, he said, I can't let it go for less than this. And I said, I make a deal with you. I'll agree to that price, but every day you don't get the SCR done, I'll lower the price every day. So that'd be incentive for you to get the SCR repaired and it'll be an opportunity for me to get it at a lower price. And we closed on the generator December sixteenth for five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. It was appraised at two point two and it was, original cost was three point two. So now we have already saved two hundred and ninety-two last year and we're projected to save next year three hundred and twenty-two.
Great. I think we're, we're pretty tight within this category, but let me just add the one more of how would you engage stakeholders? And what stakeholders would you engage in shaping and executing RMLD's strategic vision?
And when you mean, internal stakeholders or external?
Well, it's that you have a just staff a little bit, so you, both, but, but also the external ones and which ones?
Yeah. So external, I'm big on external. I believe that we do a great service to the community and it's important that we keep the community informed and let them be aware of different programs and what we're trying to offer. I implemented several programs to do that type of engagement. I do a program called Ask the General. I do that on a quarterly basis. It's an open forum. You can come. I schedule it at their, at a later time, like seven at night. People, when they come home from work and things of that nature, they can go. I'll answer any question you have about our system, operations, anything. And they're very popular and people love to come on because they always have different topics and they learn from each other. Another thing I, so that is one area I've put together. I'm very big on our Facebook. We, I redid our entire webpage. I must say, not to be critical, but our webpage, we have only three thousand meters and we have one hundred, fifteen hundred followers on our Facebook. You have thirty thousand meters and you have fourteen hundred followers, which in our analysis, and I brought along my analytics too from my webpage, which I'll be glad to share with you guys. We do a lot of engagement through those types of tools. So we do it through our website. We do it through our Facebook posts, we, which mounts people. I do a post every month on a different topic to people to understand. So I'm just trying to think of all the other things. We also do a great way of getting people involved to understand about projects through what I call electrify Merrimack. So we took our energy conservation money. And we said, instead of us coming up with programs, we're going to let the community vote on the program. So any nonprofits or municipality organization can supply a project up to five thousand dollars. And what we do is do a ballot and then the public votes on which one they want to see that money go to. And then we enhance it. So this year, the winner was the senior center. They still have, they needed to do overall their lighting, the LED lighting, and they were the winner. The community loves it because first of all, we educated about the importance of LED lighting. We talked about our free light bulbs in the office. Then we talked about the need to understand, you know, basically how we have to conserve. The other way we've done programs is I've just been rolling out our whole AMI. And I've been trying to get people to understand time of use and dealing with off-peak, on-peak concepts, which is, it's a difficult. So I go to various types of organizations. When they have their meetings, I ask if I could be a guest speaker. And then I go talk about electricity. So engaging the community, I think, is extremely important. And once you become a source of resource for them to ask questions, and I say, there is no stupid questions asked away. They all of a sudden really take an interest in it. And then when we have to tell them that we have to do something, they have a trusted partner. They feel that they can trust me, that I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I'm going to give them exactly what is, you know, why we need to do it, why we needed to do it this way.
Are we out of time? Okay. All right. I have to pass the time.
I'll try to keep my answer shorter. Apologize.
Sure. Swatson.
Yeah. Hi, Mary.
Hi.
So these questions are around the themes of execution, resilience, and results. And so the first one just says, can you share an example of a time when a project didn't go as you had planned? And what did you learn from it? How those lessons influenced your current leadership style?
Yes. So as I told you, our gatekeepers were dying when I came there. And the commissioner said, you know, one of the first things we have to do is look at our meters. They're very old. They're since two thousand and eight. They're very old. They're since 2008. So I had a meeting with Eaton. I had a meeting with Honeywell. Um, they had, um, basically had talked about doing an RFP, but Honeywell said, you already have our system. And we can, and Eaton, they had done an RFP with the town of Wellesley and they had gotten a price. So Eaton was looking at doing the whole system over, new servers, new gatekeepers, all new meters. And it had a price tag of 635,000. Honeywell said, we can do it all for a hundred thousand. All you have to do is change out the gatekeepers. A hundred thousand, 635,000. To me seemed like a no brainer. So I changed out the gatekeepers. I did have it and I have it in writing. I did ask a lot of questions and they told me, yes, the rec ones can be read by the new gatekeepers. You will have no trouble. Um, we tested it out in Canada. Totally not a problem. So we changed out the gatekeepers. Guess what happened? 950, and we only have 3,000 did not read. I had to do, of course, estimates, you know? And it was not a happy time because we had never done that in the town of Merrimack and people were confused about that and it was a big mess. And I learned a very important lesson from that is that, you know what? When someone tells me, don't worry, guaranteed, I really should have done a deeper dive. I should have gone out and said, I want to talk to the people in Canada. I want to make sure they use rec ones and things of that nature. So I learned a very invaluable lesson and I will never be fooled like that again. I have to say, the end of the story is Honeywell came out and they put in four more additional gatekeepers. They never charged us. They paid, um, they came out and they paid for all the overtime we had to do to do the manual reads. Um, for the ones that weren't reading. And on top of that, the only problem was is that we had to go out and redo all the meters at once. We were going to phase out the meters over a five-year period and now we're doing them all at once. And that's the only downsides of it. But, uh, end of next year will be totally all fully new AMIs with new gatekeepers. And the one good thing was, yes, the server did work and it's cloud based now.
Great. Thank you. Um, the next question says, can you describe a time when you faced a significant operational challenge or an unexpected setback and you had to act quickly, uh, in order to deliver the results? You could talk a little bit about your role and perhaps the outcome.
Yeah, I'm trying to think because I have one of the best foremen's known to mankind. And he does a really good job when we sit down and do the capital because he really thinks out through everything. We think it out strategically with the timeline. I think it's more, what happened was we had a capital project. We were in the process of doing it. Then we had this curve ball given to us with the AMI. And, um, we thought we could actually do the change out of the meters. But then we got a second curve ball given to us that we had not anticipated. And that was the opportunity for Ripple to come in and do fiber. So that is, we're struggling with that right now doing the scheduling. So the way I addressed that is I went to Ripple and say, how much do you want this fiber? And they go, oh, more than you could ever understand. I said, well, I'm going to price out the job and overtime. And you, if you can pay that, you, we can do this while we're doing the AMI and our capital project. So they were amendable to that. So now the way we're adjusting the schedule is the guys are doing overtime for the fiber project and still maintaining our schedules for the other two major projects we have going on.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, and then my last question, uh, relates to accountability and follow through. But it just says, how do you feel like you can ensure accountability and follow through while leading through complex initiatives? How does that work in your experience?
Um, I have a very good commissioners. I have to say, I, I really, really enjoy all three of the guys. They all bring their own skill sets there and my accountability ends with them. I, I come into them. I tell them my ideas. I come with a lot of information. I bring a lot of, uh, the deep dive. I go out and talk to other MLPs to see how they do things, where their experience, pros and cons. Um, I give them my action plan of what, how I'm going to proceed. Um, I tell them where there's risk and what the level of the risk is. And that seems to work very well because when we execute, they have a full knowledge of what's going to happen. And I have to tell you, if we run into a bump in the road, they have been a hundred percent behind me. And I, I cannot thank them enough. They're always there. They're like, hey, she told us this could be the bump in the road and, you know, she had told us about it and we'll get through this. So, um, we just recently had it happen. Um, we have an old building, um, at 10 West Main Street. We tried to do the renovation. The cost was cost prohibitive. The, the renovations were 395,000 and the value of the building is 400,000. It's a bad investment. So I did all my work and analysis and everything. And I said, we really should merge down in the garage and bring the offices down there. It'll be less cost in terms of duplication of services. And we can make this happen. And I said, but the problem is we have to get a two-thirds vote from the town. And you know how the board of selectmen feels about us and you know how the finance committee, which is made up of town, you know, town members, you know, the department heads, not the residents. And I said, so there could be a chance that they don't allow us to sell 10 West Main Street. And that just happened the other night. So we went before town meeting. I had done postings and meetings and everything. But when the board of selectmen all vote except for one against it, and the finance committee, which listened to board of selectmen and said that we never purchased the property legally, which we had done legal analysis, we did not get the votes. And the commissioners, the next day I said to them, I'm very sorry. I thought I'd done it. And they said, no, Mary, you laid it all out for us. You did all the homework. You did all the analysis. You had all the financial information and you told us that could be a possible outcome. We cannot be dissatisfied with what you did. So we're regrouping and trying to figure out the next plan. But I would say that that's how I have my accountability is from them. And the residents, which I'll give you the other thing. We just won a silver award. And, uh, you can see our success. We had 98% in terms of reliable service to customers. A hundred percent for restoring power outages and they're all in the nineties. The only one that we didn't, we got ding-dong, which is why we didn't get a gold is on providing, um, basically offering innovative programs. And that's something I'm working on with E and A through looking at the HER program. Um, it's the people, we had done a deal, deal with Homeworks where they went out and did the mass save for the gas customers. And the people are like, but I don't have gas. I have oil. And I, I said, yes, I understand that. But the nice part of working with homework is they're giving us all their analytics so that we'll know how, what worked best in the community. Was it direct mail? Was it canvassing? Was it phone calling? And we're going to take that data and hopefully we are selected for the HER pilot and we're going to try to offer those services.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And I know I didn't make enough because I did not realize. I'm done with no apology, but if everyone can share, we'll share.
All right. Hi, Mary. I'm going to ask you the next question.
Yes.
Uh, it's going to be on labor relations in organizational culture. So the first one, RMLD is a union-based organization with ongoing, uh, negotiations. What is your philosophy on collective bargaining and how have you approached labor relations in your leadership roles?
So I am 99% union in my shop too. Um, and I have done a CBA, um, a three-year that'll be up next year. Um, so I, I should give you full disclosure. My husband was the mayor of City of Salem. And over the years, watching him negotiate multiple unions, I have always had a fascination about labor relations and I've picked his brains to the point where he's like, okay, enough. Um, but I did want to learn as much as I can, knowing I was going into an all-union shop. So what I had to do is set the expectation from my commissioners. They, um, one commissioner wanted to come in really hard, like, you know, we're not giving them anything. And I said, well, let me do some work before we even develop a strategy on how to approach the CBA. So what I did is I got analysis from all over the region, you know, in terms of within 30-minute drive. So I wanted to show that the commissioners, where my negotiation strategy is that there are four openings within the 30-minute drive. Okay? So we need to know what the alternative is if they wanted to leave. Now, I only have four linemen. So you have to understand, I lose one lineman, I'm out of business. So I, retention is extremely important to me. That might not be the case as much as RMLD, but that was the situation for me. So I wanted to get that point across to my commissioners. So what I did is I advertised for a first-class lineman to see how many applications would I get? Would I be flooded with applications? I would like to ask you guys, how many applications do you think we ran it on everything and never on present? We've been, union shops, everything. We ran it everywhere. How many applications do you think I got? Nope. Zero. I got zero applications for a first-class lineman. I got a lot of people who wanted to be apprentice, which was great. And we ended up getting an apprentice, but I got zero first-class lineman. So I gave a bit of reality to my commissioners. I said, let me give you the reality. We're 12 hours standby and everybody in the region is 21. We are about $2.5 less than everybody else, um, on average. So I said, so we, we, we come in hard, we come in strong, we hold the line, okay? And we lose a line. Then what do we do? Because I just advertised for about six months and haven't had a single applicant. So they were like, yeah, we need to rethink our strategy. And I said, I'm so glad you think that. So I presented my strategy, where we, where we could give and where we could be in compliance with the region and where we could go strong. So a couple of things we did, we got them to agree to do the streetlight programs in four, in three communities. So that is an added revenue for us. So during the work hours, they go out and maintain the streetlights in Haverhill, Imsbury and Salisbury. And we made over a hundred thousand in extra revenue from them doing that. Um, yes.
Um, I'm, I'm going to jump.
Sure.
We'll do another question. What support or structure do you find the most effective in leading labor relations?
Building trust. When I came in, I looked at their CBA and there was nothing about FR clothing. Nothing. There was no allowance. There was nothing. And I went to the guys and I said, when was the last time you bought some of our clothing? They go, well, we had to bring it up to the general manager and he hadn't inspected. And if he felt it needed to be replaced, he would tell us we could have X number of dollars to replace it. I said, well, that's going to stop today. Well, our CBA is not, I said, I don't care. I am going to write an MOU onto the CBA and we're going to create an allowance for our FR clothing. And they go, you, you, you're going to just do that? And I said, yes, I am. And they go, why? I said, because safety is number one priority. I'm not an FR clothing expert. I'm not going to jeopardize your life over allowance that you should have had in your CBA. And I'm sorry they didn't, but we're going to take care of that. And when they saw me take on that voluntarily to say, I am serious about safety. When I got to negotiations, they were like, there was a trust factor there. When I said to them, we really want to do this, but we can't do that, they went, you know what? We trust you, Mary, because you have never, ever bullshered with us. And I hope that's acceptable to say.
Another, another part of the, the same drama. Can you share a specific example of a challenging labor negotiation you've had or participated in? And what was the situation and what was the outcome?
So our union is all one union, which is very difficult when you have clerks. And they're outnumbered every time it votes with the lineman. So there's only a finite pool of money. And so if you're going to do one and you have to take from another, then, then it's like, oh, let's take it to a vote. And of course, it's always going to come out five for what the lineman want and two for the clerk staff. And I was like, all right, I would have never set up the union like this, but I wasn't here when you created your union. So I went to the commissioners. I said, that's really unfair. The clerks work just as hard. Giving them just a cola is unfair. And they said, well, how do you expect you to address that, Mary? And I said, well, I want to give them an incentive that they could get the match that the guys are getting, the same percentage. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to put in some objectives. And if they are measurable and they meet them, then they can get the same percentage that the guys are getting. Okay? Because that's unfair that they're not. And this way, I showed them, if they met those objectives, it was going to reduce our costs. So it would be able to be, from our savings, would be able to cover it. Because there was, it was very specific, very detailed objectives. And some of them were things that we were outsourcing that we were going to take in-house. And the clerk, we're like, yeah, 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 we're, we're good for that. So we have a system now where the clerks have objectives. And if they meet those objectives, they do get the increase. It's a sliding one. So it goes from one percentage to another. So it's not a straight. And it's based on, on the valuation of those objectives. And that really, that, you know, was never done before and it was not really a fair sys, system, I felt.
Thank you.
We have about four minutes or so, Tim, so I'm going to, let's try to keep yours around.
And I will try to do short, short.
Uh, kind of quick and easy. It's, it's about stakeholder engagement and communication. So, um, there's a couple of questions, but I'll just put it into one is, um, how would you foster trust and maintain open, transparent communication with the key stakeholders, including the board of commissioners, our customers, the ratepayers? Um, and, um, how would you go about that?
Well, I think I answered a lot of that, but I will go over to about how, um, our webpage is, is excellent. If you haven't ever gone to it, please go to MerrimackLight.com. You'll see it's constantly updated. One of the things is that we, it's called Where's Waldo, but I call it Where's Linemen? So every day we post where our linemen are. When my husband was a mayor, I always used to resent when people say, those DPW guys, they do nothing. Well, I would say, do you want to be out at three o'clock in the morning in knee-deep sewer trying to fix a pipe? I don't think so. And I always thought that those people work hard. So I wanted to get across, our linemen are working all the time. They're not sitting around in the garage. So we do Weird World, we call it Where's Linemen. The linemen love it now. They send me pictures and we post them and we say, hey, our linemen are out doing this today. You know, putting in a pole, replacing a, um, a transformer, things of that nature. And the comments we get are incredible. And then I bring them to the staff meeting and I read them on. And at first the guys were like, oh, we don't want to hear this. Now they get all excited, like, what did they say this week? And it builds morale because they know the community appreciates them and the community feels engaged. And so that's one of the areas we use social media a lot and in order to get across our communication. Um, so I hope that helps with that one. In terms of my board, I, I inundate my board with a ton of information. They go, it's information overload, Mary. But I said to him, it's better information overload than not enough information. Because I want you to be informed. I'm making some very important decisions here and I want you to feel confident. Okay? So we are a team. We are working together to become the best light department out of all the 40 light departments.
Excellent.
So.
Good answer.
Yeah, no problem.
Pause it. Pause it. Oh, thank you. Overachieving there, Tim. Okay, perfect. Um, well, I'm sure Mr. Porter will take the extra minute though.
Right, um. I'm the last person to ask you a question. So we're in the homestretch here.
Oh, I can breathe a little bit.
Yes. What do you hope to accomplish in your first year as general manager?
I like to get calmness to ready municipal light department or our MLD. And I don't mean to say that, but I, I listen, one of the things I'm into is external communication. I don't have to tell you, you've gone through a revolving door situation. I would like to bring stability, calmness and direction. I think the people that there had, there needs to be a sense that there's somebody driving the ship, driving the bus. We know where we're going. We're all on it together. We're all working for the same common good. So I would like to see that culture forced through that culture, forced through that sense of this is the greatest place to work. Um, it is sad if I got this job to leave Merrimack. I really, really love all my employees and my commissioners and the community that I serve. I hope to bring that same spirit because when I got to Merrimack, it was a sad place. They had gone through general manager after general manager. The staff felt skittish. Um, they didn't know where to go. They didn't know what to do. They really didn't feel good about things. They loved their jobs and they loved the work they did, but they didn't. They loved their jobs and they loved the work they did, but they didn't know if they were recognized. Or if they were ever kept informed, they never knew what was going on. The place was very pop-heavy silo, it was kind of, everything was done in secrecy. I was like, guys, full transparency, you are going to know as much as I, because I need you. This is my first job of being distribution. I know energy, but I've never done distribution. And I need you to correct me, every time I say megawatt, you have to remind me it's kilowatts, okay? Because I'll be talking to some lady and saying, oh my goodness, you have five hundred megawatts, and they're like, watts? And I'm like, oh yeah, kilowatts. So I said, you are a part of this team, we're going to turn this place around together, okay? And I have to tell you, they're having a watch party right now, and they're very, they understand, they want, they say, this is what they said to me. We want what's best for you, Mary, because you brought what's the best for us. You brought this place back, so we're all very proud to work here. And you did that, and I hope you can do that for another MLP. Even though we'd love for you to stay, but if you can do that for another MLP, then, you know what, go do it.
Oh, thank you. How do you define success in leadership, and how would you measure it? What metrics would find success?
I think you guys, you're owned by these people, your customers, okay? There, that's what it is, it's a customer-owned, those are our stakeholders, shareholders. And when you get, like I did, those kind of results, then you know you're doing a good job. Because those are your, those are your customers, they're your shareholders. I mean, companies go, what do our shareholders think? That's how they measure, these are our shareholders, they think we're doing a great job, so I would say that that's success.
Administrative question before I get to the final one, are there any constraints that might affect your ability to start in January twenty twenty-six?
Yes, I think I disclosed that to the headhunter. I have a planned trip that's all been paid for, for two years, for my husband and I to go down the Nile. So it's been a present that I put together, and it's non-refundable, but I did disclose that to the headhunter at the time. He said, I'm sure we can work on it if you're chosen.
So the, the date, then the availability date would be?
Would be February fifteenth, unfortunately.
Okay.
Last and final, why do you want this job, why do you feel you're the right fit for the GM role at RMLD?
I love a challenge. When I got the job at Merrimack, they went, oh, here's another one, number, scorecard, number four going down. I said, not so fast, guys, because I love a challenge, and that's not going to be the case. I think that there's an opportunity here to verse the course, and I'm not, I don't even know what it is. I just know that you've had multiple managers, it seems to be a same scenario that I had in Merrimack. I like the challenge, I like to come into a places, and I like to see and figure out what's gone wrong, how can we correct it, what can we do better? I actually brought some articles that I've, I've actually penned and have put out. One is called Defending Public Power, A Lesson For Utilities In Competition In Community. You're not, you're not, you have competition, I, I've heard so many GMs tell me, oh, you know, we're a monopoly, we have no competition, yes, you do. And you, you've got to stop thinking that way, you have competition, okay? IOUs are losing their gas industry, they have only so much service territory. They're the ones who put the bug in the air of our Board of Selectmen, okay? So there is competition out there, you have to provide the services they provide at a competitive price, which means a lot less than them. So if you're not thinking that way strategically, then you could be finding yourself like Merrimack, where, you know, the Board of Selectmen in the nights want to get your money, and say, as one selectman said to me, the lights are not going out, somebody else will provide the power. So that is, so that's one thing. And then the other thing is all about my lessons I learned from when we were up for the sale. So those are the things I think that I can bring, it's a new way of thinking about the municipal light department. And I think that that's important, that we have those in place.
Thank you very much, is, is there anything that we didn't ask that you were hoping that we would ask?
No, I mean, I, I, you're, you have a lot of information on your website, I understand you're redoing it, because it's not as user-friendly. The engagement from the customers, you know, you want them to be able to do everything in one transaction. So those are kind of things I was looking at. Did you do ever a cost-of-service study, I just couldn't find that online, okay?
That, that, that's actually one of the things that's in flight.
Okay, all right, and then and I had another one, and no, that was my big one, because I couldn't find that at all.
Right.
So thank you.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Wrong too, I only have one of those, but you can keep that one. All right, and then with the pleasure meeting all of you, I don't, didn't get to personally meet you guys, Charlie.
I'm Charlie also.
Oh, Charlie, Charlie.
I'm Tim Woods, nice to meet you.
Mick, I know, um, I know, David, Matt, and Richard, okay?
Nice meeting you.
Pleasure meeting you all, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
So we will take a break after this to give people a chance to kind of take, recapture their notes. But after that, we will move into before, so before we do the break and then move into executive, anything else we need to do in terms of scheduling? Got tomorrow at noon, we've got our budget meeting on November twelfth, and then a I can't remember if we said this was tentative or firm.
The E and E on the sixth, November sixth.
November sixth, yes. So November sixth, E and E, and then November nineteenth, we also have our close plan meeting, regular board, okay? And is it the twelfth that is in North Reading?
The twelfth is in North Reading.
Okay.
And nineteenth is back here.
Correct, the ninth.
What time do we see on the sixth?
Six P M.
Six P M would be fine.
Great, thank you.
Can you just send out a text last on the eleventh, the tenth, six, twelfth, eleventh, that will not be here.
Oh, right.
It was a reminder, because I have muscle memory. Oh, I did, it happened in Wilmington, I just muscle memory, I come right here.
Do you want someone to pick you up? All right, perfect, and then it looks like we have an MCLA meeting for those interested in participating, December fourth. Okay, so any questions about process from here before we go to go to executive session?
Are you doing the executive session here?
I think we normally move, so we won't be here.
You will move, yeah, okay, all right, so then we just debrief here.
Okay. Do you have to do that in an open meeting, or?
No.
No, no, okay, all right. Okay, so then you can adjourn.
Okay. We, if we're just going to, if we're going to debrief, we don't need to adjourn right now, right?
Or it should still be an open meeting?
It is debrief, here, if you are, and entering.
Yeah, so why, I don't why don't you?
Okay, we had motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second.
All right. All right, all in favor?
All in favor.
All right, fine, hi.
Okay, we want to move to, move to executive session.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners adjourn regular session, vocal, vocal quiet.
Are you good?
I think we're, we're going to executive. Sorry.
I'm sorry, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners go into an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one sixty-four, Section forty-seven D, exempt from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under purposes number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel returned to open sessions for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All of us in favor? All right, five and O. Perfect, okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.